I'd like to call together the Town Council Joint School Committee Budget Work Session. This is our fourth budget work session. The Town Council has met the 7th, 8th, and 9th, and this is our fourth work session. So, in the time, our apologies for the start time of this meeting being delayed. Our apologies. And the time is 6:35, and if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My correction, 6:55. And tonight's budget is going to be the school fund transfer, and then it is a public work session, so we will take questions at the end from the audience and other matters of interest and concern. So at this point, I will turn it over to Superintendent. Welcome. Thank you, Dr. Kristin Stringfellow.
This evening, I'd like to -- can you hear me okay? Move it in. Can you hear me? Thank you. This evening, I'd like to take the council through a PowerPoint presentation that I worked on with the school committee to talk about the events in budgeting that led to this evening's conversation. Mr. Alfred, if you will. Thank you. So this is a review and an update of our original expenditure assumptions. When I presented this information to you in December, the health insurance costs were expected to increase by $697,000. However, now we have the benefit of experience on claims through January 31st, and we are now reducing this line item by $300,000. By way of a reminder, P accounts, we assumed a 3% increase over last year, and as you may recall, last year was a reduction by 10% in supplies and materials to each school that could be textbooks and supplies by per pupil expenditure. Transportation, at the onset of our budget process, we projected an increase of about $108,000. However, since our December meeting, we went out to bid and awarded a bid, and the contract reduces our budgetary assumption by $150,000. We were projecting a 5% increase in utilities. We've been told by the Department of the retirement will increase 2%. And again, by way of a reminder, we have three collective bargaining agreements that will be expiring, two in June of 2011 and one in August, but clearly after the budget process is complete. We knew that we had adjustments in rates for outside tuitions, special education tuitions up by 5%, and now Charahoe Vocational Center and the charter schools will be included in the funding formula. So there's been an adjustment for those tuitions as well. Next. We had projected state aid to be 5% off of the projection of the funding formula. This is the first year of the enacted funding formula, and as you'll see later in the slideshow, we budgeted very close to actual. Our local revenue, we are asking for a 0.64% increase in the town transfer to schools. Next. This is a reminder slide about the pension rate. The certified pension rate was 11.25% as a result of pension reform, and rates have increased to 13.23, which is an additional expenditure of $371,000. Non-certified pensions were 6.20%, and rates have increased in this category as well to 8.59%, which is an additional expenditure of approximately $141,000. And this slide showcases the pension trend, and that we did have sort of a brief reprieve in the 2010-11 year, and again, we're starting to escalate. And this graph will show you that really we're at a high point, you know, two or three years ago came down, and we're back on our way up, clearly higher than non-certified than we've ever been. In terms of our district FTEs, I walked you through this chart in December up to the net change line item, noticing that from 2007 to 2011, down 0.5 administrator, certified staff down 32.7, non-certified staff down 28.3, for a total staff decline in that four-year timeframe of 61.5 FTEs, which I think we can all agree is significant. Within our projected budget that you have in front of you this evening, the number decreases even further. So you're noticing that administrators now 20, certified 344, non-certified 172.2, making a total reduction that was 548.6, FTEs now 536.6. Next. And this graph is not updated to include the projections because it's not finalized yet, but it does bring you through the 2011 school year. The council had asked that we include in our budget presentation in December the money that we received in federal grants, Title I disadvantage, Title II teacher quality, Title IV safe and drug-free schools, IDEA, in our ERA funds. And these are the numbers that we received last year. Of course, we don't know what those numbers will be for this coming year as we do the Consolidated Resource Plan in May, and those numbers become available to us as projections until the finalized federal budget. Next. What we do know is that the ERA funds disappear entirely, and so we've been very good in the South Kingstown School Department to spend those monies in a manner that we would be building our capacity, but that we wouldn't create any sort of shortfall for the future. Next. This is the expenditures by item, so we tried to draw in, to respond to a request from the council, in the areas of Title I, II, III, IDEA, and preschool in 2011, these are the expenditures by item in terms of salary, benefits, purchase services, supplies and equipment, and then capital equipment. Next. Charter school enrollments, we had a period in 2006 and 2007 with significant enrollment. That figure lowered most recently in 2009, September 2009, to 101 students. We're back up to 108 students. That coincides with a new charter school opening, the Green School, which is a high school where we have five students enrolled. And this shows you our charter trend had been going downwards with a small increase due to a new school opening. This is our state aid trend. We've updated this slide to show you that we were projecting 8,444,527. That was the figure we were projecting as of December 16th, and we were also anticipating 375,000 in group home aid, which you can see is the smallest percentage of state aid that we've received in over a decade, now representing 14.8% of our budget. And then the updated figure at the bottom shows in the fiscal year 2012 governor's recommended budget as of March 9th, 2011, that we will be receiving 8,391,000. So our projection of 8,444 was very, very spot on. Next. This is a slide showing our undesignated fund balance. Undesignated funds in June of 2009 in the amount of 1.9 million. Undesignated in June of 2010, 2.3 million, and the school committee has proposed to apply to the 1112 operational budget 775,623, which would put our balance at 1.5 million. These are the items that occupied much of the discussion at the school committee table in terms of the budget reductions. The school committee took 644,000 in reductions, a teacher assistant reduction at the Hazard Preschool, the elimination of a school nurse teacher floater position, mentor program supplies reduction, ESY, summer school, a full-time equivalent staff itinerant teacher, a full-time equivalent course consolidation, eight full-time equivalent teacher assistants and/or clerks, replacement administrator savings, transportation savings included in the bid, which was mentioned in the beginning of the presentation. We had to add back unemployment compensation, and therefore, our total is $644,000. So the superintendent's budget started at 59,567,477. The school committee budget with that 644,000 reduction came to 58,898, and as a result of some of the experiences that we were informed about in January, the school committee updated budget that's before you this evening is 58,434,545. Other considerations, as I mentioned before, ERA grants and stabilization funds are gone. The ERA funds simply expire. The SFSF funds are currently used as a supplement to state aid. They also expire in fiscal year 2012. Initially, we wanted you to be aware that it really is up to the governor to determine the amount and what amount will be considered in the base of our state aid or if it's eliminated entirely. And as you can see, an update as of March 8th, when the governor's recommended budget was released, he's recommending restoring that money. Group home aid, as of March 8th, is included in the governor's recommended budget and is a part of our revenue. So thankfully, those that have worked to guarantee that piece have been successful. Next. I've been asked if we needed to take additional reductions, what would they be beyond the 640,000? And this is, I guess, a cut list, if you will, in priority order. Please understand that the first item would be the first cut priority. So P accounts, eliminating intramurals, they are now hosted in grades 5 through 12, would mean caseload increases for specialists, eliminating grade 4 and 5 instrumental music and chorus, eliminating the maintenance truck that you saw in our capital plan, an additional high school course consolidation, student assistance counselors, middle school athletics, computer labs, guidance counselor, school nurse teachers sharing buildings, taking one FTE out of the whole, a librarian reduction, and that, those items would total 741,000 without consideration for unemployment benefits. And that concludes my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Stringfellow. At this point, do we have any questions from this table? Town Council? Polly?
Do you have an estimate of that last one? The unemployment?
We don't have the salaries broken out, but I think you can extrapolate it from just a, I would say, ballpark figure? Probably. Let's say 50,000? 45 or 50,000.
Carol?
Kristin, what is a student assistant counselor?
Student assistance counselor actually is partially supplemented from a grant. We have two, one that services our high school and one that services Broad Rock and Curtis Corner, and they work to talk to students about making positive choices and avoiding behavior that could be unhealthy.
And when you talk about the school nurse teachers sharing buildings, could you explain what you mean by that?
Certainly. Right now, we have a school nurse teacher in every building. We have medically fragile children in every building. In addition to that, we have what's called a school nurse teacher floater, because in some cases, when a school nurse teacher is absent, it's very difficult to find not just an LPN or an RN, but a certified school nurse teacher to take over. And so we have operated for many years with a person who we pay in district, who is based at the high school, who could be deployed to any one of our schools in the event of an absence of a teacher, or in the event of field trips, or other activities that might warrant an additional nurse. I've already taken the floater school nurse teacher as a budget reduction this year, which means now we don't have a backup, to be honest. If we were, there are other schools in the state that don't have a certified school nurse teacher in every school, so we would have to look to a model to share between buildings.
And as far as the school nurse teacher, I know there's been talk about having a school nurse that's not necessarily certified to be a teacher. Is that a contractual issue, or is that?
Is it requirements, a mandate?
It is a mandate.
Right now, it is a mandate, yes.
So that, I mean, maybe that would be a mandate that we could, would that save money if the nurse wasn't a certified teacher, or wouldn't it make any difference?
Well, I, as you're probably aware, nurses having different credentials could require a certain salary. So if we're talking about a LPN or a two-year RN, I would think that they, you know, could potentially be less expensive than a certified nurse teacher. They are a part of the bargaining unit, and so within the bargaining unit, those salaries are standardized. And so I would think that it would need more investigation to presume how we would get any savings from that sort of relief.
Okay. And one more question. As to your FTEs, I'm looking at the amount of, when you say certified, non-certified, we're talking teachers that are certified, and non-certified would be any other employee that is not a teacher?
Could be a teacher assistant, a clerk, a technology technician, custodian. Those would be non-certified. Certified would mean teachers.
And when I look at the amount of certified and non-certified FTEs, full-time employees that have been laid off, would you say, since '06, '07 to the present day, there's certainly a higher percentage of teachers and non-certified employees, and a much lower percentage of administrators being let go. Now, can you, it would seem to me that the administrators would be, would stay in similar fashion, that it would be almost on a percentage basis. Why would you need the same amount of administrators if you have less personnel?
Because one of the, we're already operating, well, I guess the first question is the denominator's lower. So if you only have 21, and all of a sudden you were to, we have an administrator per building, and then we have an assistant administrator per building, it would be impossible to cut that figure in half or even a third if we still wanted to maintain supervision and coverage in every building. So certainly, you could entertain an option of having an administrator share more than one building, but that would, that would be a consideration of student safety.
Did you end up doing that with the two elementary schools? I know there was some discussion about a floating principal in light of the fact that there were two principals that were retiring this year?
The discussion at the school committee table was talking about two concepts, actually. First, it was talking about the concept of taking a look at school restructuring, and in taking a look at school restructuring, we thought that there would inevitably be budgetary savings of an administrator at the end of that process, and how would we be able to attract a candidate from another district to come to a school that may be restructured or taken offline? And so what would we do for one year while we're planning and working with the community to determine what our restructuring will look like? We were able to garner savings at that point. We would have not necessarily a building share, as I just described, but a temporary situation that could involve all sorts of situations. Could be someone from the principal's residency network, could be a retired principal, it could be principals for one year working together with an assistant principal. That hasn't been fully determined yet.
So you're going to replace both principals, is that what you're saying to me? Because you're only down 0.5 of a position, so that's not a full position.
Correct. So we, okay, so for one year, we're looking to not replace both until we know what the restructuring will look like.
You know, I have to ask you, how is that reflected in these numbers? I mean, 9, 10, you've got 20.5, 10, 11, you've got 21 administrators. So it's not reflected here that you're considering one less principal?
So you're looking at 10, 11 to projected.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so there's the 20.
Twenty-one to 20.
So the net change, okay, that's the one. Sorry. Liz?
I just had a question. You mentioned safety as far as reductions in the administrative, and I believe that the safety issue is that principals are responsible for bus monitoring and those types of things. Is that what you're referring to? Since?
Well, there's really a lot of pieces. So for example, I'll take the Mattoonik Elementary School. So Deb Zep provides supervision for the entire building. So she certainly does, you know, do cafeteria control, and she does bus monitoring pieces dismissal, but she's the administrator in the building all day.
Right.
And so if there were a discipline or a safety concern, and there was no administrator there, that would be an issue, especially since our schools are not very close together, and therefore, that would require some travel time.
Okay. That was my, I just wanted to clarify that.
Are there questions here at the table? Tony, did you have a question? I'm sorry, Jim.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Tone? Tony? Could you just wait one second? Jim, I was informed by Polly that Tony was first, and then I'll come to you. Is that okay?
I thought you were doing this table.
I'm sorry. Because Liz jumped in, we're going back and forth. Tony?
Okay, thank you. You know, you have seven buildings, you need seven principals, so that's already one-third is fixed. Then you have your, obviously, superintendent, assistant superintendent, pupil personnel director, finance, maintenance. So the denominator that you're actually working with that is fluid is very tiny. You know, those positions have to be filled. And on top of that, I know one thing that Kristin has mentioned is that the state, the changes that ride are going to need to be implemented through administration. So in essence, that becomes yet another state mandate. So, you know, the race to the top, teacher evaluations, you know, and there's indirect cost in that that isn't sometimes ferreted out when you see the initial plans, but the work has to come from someone. And so I think in reality, when you look at how many people, there's some flexibility with it. It's probably less than five that you're dealing with, and that's why that number I perceive doesn't change much. I'd be interested when we start seeing uniform charts of accounts data about where we stand with administrators, but I don't get the sense that our district is going to look very top-heavy with administrators.
Kristin, you talked about restructuring. Could you give me a little bit more information on what you're talking about?
So, am I still on? Okay. The school committee started in the fall involving a community focus group to work with us on our strategic plan, particularly in the area of resources. A strategic group has met, has brought forth some significant ideas, and those ideas will be worked on with a smaller community group. At the last school committee meeting, the Professional Development Subcommittee gave a report to the larger school committee, talking about a group that will meet from now until the end of May, a total of nine times, once a week for approximately two hours, to talk about reconfiguration as a reconfiguration advisement committee.
So you're talking about reconfiguration of our facilities, just?
Yes.
Okay. Will that give you enough time to close a school for next September?
The intent is not to do that. The intent is to have this committee inform the school committee so that the school committee can make a decision by the end of June, and that we can take a year to plan the restructuring well and implement the following September.
I guess I respectfully disagree. I think you should be closing a school this year. As you know, I think Curtis Corner should be closed, and if you look at the population numbers, you can reopen South Road, you can run a K through six through the five elementaries, or you can turn the sixth graders back to South Road. The numbers work. I know Tony's interested in achievement. There's no reason at all why lesser populations can't give us the same results in achievement. I think you're putting off the inevitable, and I do not understand what the delay is here. I see some incredible high risk at a delay getting to this, and I'll get to that later. I just wanted to ask you a numerical question, or maybe John can answer it. What is our current year healthcare cost for the schools? Are we around 7.5 million? For our budget, the 94.5% that the taxpayers kick in, not the teachers?
I told them, budgeted for 2010-11 is 7,242.
Okay, so you're really only expecting, I mean, this is good news here with the healthcare, so you're only expecting an increase of about 4%? Is that roughly? Steve, am I on the right page here?
It actually, with the last adjustment, is less than 4%.
Okay.
How much of that is related to the acceleration in the salary of the co-pay from the employees that has been factored into that budget number, Jim?
Okay. And Kristin, I appreciate the PowerPoint. Sometimes I'd really like to be thorough with some numbers here. I'm looking at last year's, what you gave us on the FTEs, and, you know, I think it's only fair to, when the facilities became an incredible question, with the opening of Broad Rock, I think you should remind people, we were 519, and I'm using your numbers from last year, and I also had those from the 2001-2 budget. We had 519 total FTEs. So, you know, we're up in the 540, 550 area, so I think that's the way to look at the change, because, you know, we've lost over 900 kids in this. Kristin, am I bothering you?
I'm trying to figure out where you get the 519. Did you say prior to opening Broad Rock?
Yeah, you gave us the numbers last year, and those are the numbers. In your last year, the 2010-11 budget, you said personnel, you talked about the budget, of course, you don't put page numbers on here, but total, you had 519.0, 2000, 2001. And then, as everybody knows?
2001, okay, that's, you can keep going now, I'm with you.
As everybody knows, with the population beginning to drop then, we got all the way up to 621, up 102 people two years later. So I think, I'll use the word disingenuous, it's not the word I want to use, but I think if you're going to show this, you really need to show how this relates to our facilities and the and assets being used. We're up about 30 personnel, while the school population is down by 900. And your number of classrooms is up 5%, knocking off the 13, 15 from South Road and adding the 24 from Broad Rock. 182 plus 9, 191. We're up 5% in the classroom area, too. So, you're gonna have to understand why a lot of people are quite concerned, why in the world hasn't this budget been adjusted downward by a few million dollars to account for this population? And I look back at what Dr. Hicks said a couple of years ago, and I know you're in charge now, but Dr. Hicks said, I've got his quote here somewhere, I'll find it for you if you want me to, thought that reopening South Road for the sixth graders, particularly because of the operating costs of Curtis Corner, were so much more than reopening South Road. So, as I mentioned earlier, whether it's for sixth graders or K-6, the numerical numbers and the trend that we got from NASDAQ tells me we can go back to a neighborhood school system of K-6, stop the Curtis Corner bleeding, of which we've had for personnel, 7th and 8th and Broad Rock, and that's where the bubble is. So, I think things coming along there would be, I think, certainly not hurt the achievement level at all. So, that's where I'm coming with that. Let's see, any other dollar and cent questions? Bear with me here, I had another one. Yeah, I guess Tony did clear up some of the things with the management. I was worried, the extra $700,000 you were talking about, if the budget turned ugly, that you'd have to find there. I was very concerned that those 20 folks were principal, vice principals, but you're including John and yourself?
Correct.
All right, who's not on action, active duty, let's say? How many?
Who's not on active duty?
You have, what, four principals and vice principals at the high school? There are four?
I have three currently. I have three assistant principals at the high school, a principal at the high school, a principal and a vice principal at Curtis Corner and Broad Rock. I have 1.5 personnel in administration at Peasdale, a full-time principal at each Wakefield, West Kingston, and Mattoonik.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I was worried that this was management-heavy, so I guess I can't disagree with Tony too much on that. But I'm not sure, the high school with, you know, we've gone from 1,400 kids seven years ago, you know, we'll be under 1,100 in a couple of years. Why in the world can't we let a vice principal go there? I don't understand that. And again, I'm just doing things pro-rate. I'm not gonna argue about what the new mandates coming down are, but just in terms of math, it certainly makes sense that you could let a vice principal go. And I certainly concur that you should only hire one principal, whether they're roving or not, for the two that we're losing next year at the elementary schools. So, I'll retire for a second here, Ella, but I've got many more questions.
Jim, I would just like to respond to just one comment with the PowerPoint slide that we have with the district full-time equivalencies. I think there is not misrepresentation, because this chart that we have in front of us goes, starts with the '06, '07 year, '07, '08, and information that you referenced back to 2001, so it's just not on this chart. And when Broad Rock was opened, the district did make the choice to go to a middle school, which is a cost, it does cost more to run a middle school, it's beneficial educationally for children, and that was a decision of the school committee at that time. So, I just wanted to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples, rather than apples to oranges. Please, I welcome your comments.
I absolutely disagree with those comments, Ella. This was delivered by Kristin last year, and this is where this whole issue started about assets and facility use. And we jumped from 519 folks to 621 in two years because of the Broad Rock opening. And I know you want to talk about the middle school, the middle school model, which is wonderful, but Jack Harrington, at the time, gave us a number of different models to save taxpayer money. For instance, keeping just the sixth graders at Broad Rock and 7th and 8th graders in Curtis Corner. Jack Harrington had different models, showing that we could start with a million three to a million seven, yeah, a million three to a million seven of savings in the first year alone. And if you add up 10 years, that's somewhere between $15 and $20 million. That has been, I used the terminology for running for office last year, that taxpayers have been fleeced out of, the way they divided the school. And yet, here we are back in 2009. What did Dr. Hicks recommend? We saved $600,000, plus we had a huge surplus. And what did we do? We went back to one group, one sixth grade group at Broad Rock and 7th and 8th and Curtis Corner. So, we did what Jack Harrington said, if the taxpayers were going to be protected somewhat back in 2001, '02, and here we are going back to in 2009. Those are facts.
I think that you are referencing, I see that you have something in front of you that is different representation than I have in front of me. So, could you reference the material? Because I don't think that's material that you're referencing that we have at the table.
This is school committee budget, 2010, '11, from February 11th, 2010. That's what I'm reading off of for all the FTEs.
Okay. And my references to what was given to us at the packet, the packet here tonight is part of the PowerPoint presentation.
And I'm not disagreeing with that.
So, we're comparing two different documents here.
Oh, I know. It was just the emphasis that Kristin was putting on, look how many FTEs we've dropped, when in fact, with the 900-plus children we've lost, we're still up 30 FTEs and up 5% in classrooms. These are facts, and I'll be happy to go with, through with them, step by step with you.
All right. So, I think we're in agreement that there was an increase in staff with the opening of Broad Rock.
Correct.
Okay. At least we agree upon that. All right. So, back to my original comment, Jim. The documents that we have here at the table that we're referencing is different documentation. So, I just wanted to make that clear. That this chart that we have as part of the PowerPoint does not go back to 2001. That was the only statement I wanted to make.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions here at the table, or school committee table? Tony?
Jim, do you know the achievement data for 1999, 2000 for the district?
No, Tony, I do not. I certainly know some of the recent levels, which we've shown some very outstanding results as some of our cohorts, cohorts such as Portsmouth and Lincoln. I mean, I've got lots of recent numbers, kneecaps, everything else. I think we're in very good shape there. I don't have the numbers from 1999 to 2000.
That's why I think it's difficult to reference back that far. I did look that up. The district's junior high school at that time was underperforming. And I can't say, because I wasn't sitting at this table, about all the factors that went into decision-making, but my understanding was an underperforming school, a crowded school. And there were, there was a lot of discussion about how to improve outcomes, going to a team approach. In addition, during that course of a decade, we did go to a full-day K. We saw some of those charter school numbers impacted, and we think a major impact was the full-day kindergarten program. However, I don't disagree with everything. You know, I think the school committee has recognized that efficiencies can be gained through some form of consolidation. And the methodology in which we get there is requesting that we take it over an additional year. One is to build community consensus over a plan that the district hopes will be the plan, that the school committee hopes will be the plan for the district for a long period of time, that it would be a stable plan. And then, the implementation of it done correctly. And this is modeled after what's been done in other districts. But I'd be careful in just looking at this numerically. I do think that achievement is an important part of this, as you and I have sparred about in the past. And I do think it was served by the model that was decided upon 10 years ago. I think we became a better school district as a result, but I also think that we're at a point where we're making adjustments. And I think we've tried to tackle that. We have closed one school. We have reconfigured middle schools, maybe not the best reconfiguration, but we have. And we are in the process of looking at the next step. What we hope, though, is the next step is one that provides a stable structure for a long period of time, because certainly that's what individuals in the community feel that they value. Your model certainly, or the model that you proposed, is certainly one that will be considered. But I think there are gonna be others that are gonna be looked at also, with savings in achievement given equal weight.
Yeah. And Tony, to respond to that, I'm not arguing that performance hasn't been excellent with the middle schools. What I'm talking about was recommendation by the superintendent at the time to save taxpayers money. We could've just put the sixth graders into Broad Rock. Those are his recommendations, I've got them all over here, and 7th and 8th and Curtis Corner. You still had the middle school model, the team teaching, you still had achievement. And what I'm telling you is, two years ago, at the end of Dr. Hicks's reign, this is what we went back to. We put the sixth graders into Broad Rock. So, here we go. We went back. And if you add up all the dollars savings with just compounding, just using the budgets that we had, you're easily in the $15 to $18 million range over those 10 years. Yet, still getting your achievement, still getting your middle school model, having it all there, but just dividing the children differently. The school committee decided to become Solomon, back with Broad Rock opening. What we basically did, and I'll just give you a simplified routine here. Let's say we had 100 kids in the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and say we had 10 teaching staff. What we did, we took 50 kids, put them in Broad Rock, 50 in Curtis Corner. Did we divide, did we divide the 10 staff into five each? No. 10 went here, we added another 10. And that's why we jumped 102 people over two years. I'm just saying that the finances have caught up with us over these 10 years. I'm not damning the middle school model. It has worked. All I'm saying is, we should've left one grade alone, either in Broad Rock, and two in the Curtis Corner. We've lost incredible opportunities, and our taxpayers are paying incredible sums that could've been much, much less, and we probably have a school committee budget today. That would be $2 to $3 million less than it is.
Since I don't hear that you're questioning the investment in the middle school model, I see that as a good thing. I understand what you say, that there was presentations by Superintendent Harrington, but clearly, the school committee at that time valued the middle school model and what it would bring to the district. And I think, as Tony also pointed out, there was a period of time when we were able to make some decisions about how we develop the program, bringing in all-day K. I think right now, we have an opportunity that, you know, we can lament what's happened, or I should say, you can lament what's happened, but truthfully, we're taking a, you know, a step back, we're working with our community, and what is the future of our community going to look like? And we're not looking at it for just next year, we're looking at it down the line. And we hope that by having a community consensus and not just an individual's perspective on how best to organize the district, that we can really develop our district and develop some efficiencies, and certainly increase our student achievement as we go along.
My response to you on that is that Steve Alfred and I have asked you every year for the last five years, we need to develop a long-term plan, especially with the populations, NASDAQ predictions, everything else. We've been on top of that. And yet, here we are now with another restructuring group, not gonna finish till June, so nothing will happen in the '11, '12 year, we'll have to wait another year. I just think we're at risk with a lot of money, which I'll go through why in a few minutes. I just think it's a decision that can't be put off. Now, lately in the newspaper, we've been challenged, obviously, about closing a school or else, a little bit of blackmail about, you either give us some money, or we'll be losing, I guess the threat was Wakefield School. I have not changed from my early beliefs that Curtis Corner is the sacrifice here. I believe Dr. Hicks was absolutely right with its operating costs. I mean, he went through them briefly at one time. And I have begged for planning for years from this school committee. All the figures were here, the state deficits coming at us, there are no surprises anywhere. The lowering of the number of children in the school system, there were no surprises. I'm just disturbed that we didn't plan, and we haven't been where we, you want to go now by June. I'm surprised we didn't do this a couple of years ago. We had the opportunity. 900 kids, you know, 700, 800 kids along the way. We only closed South Road, the smallest school, at 330 population. So, we just haven't been fair to the taxpayers in terms of the most efficient models you could've run with the populations.
Dr. Stringfellow?
Mr. O'Neill, I think that I want to say that we have a strategic plan that works through a five-year period of time. There was a strategic plan prior to our updating and revitalizing the strategic plan. In addition to that, I know that you're aware that a NASDAQ facilities study was conducted in order to inform the best way to restructure. And we're utilizing that information very thoughtfully. I'm certain that you would agree that a thoughtful process, to make certain that it's a long-lasting process that could garner efficiencies, but be the best educational model that we could offer to the students of South Kingstown, would be paramount to doing something very quickly with only one year in mind.
And again, I'll respond to that. I asked for this to happen years ago, every single time we've met.
Kathy?
I just want to say that I just want to apologize for the school committee, and I don't want to be associated with Mr. O'Neill's term of blackmail in any way, shape, or form. I don't think that that should've been stated at the table. I just want to make that clear.
Carol?
Back to just a question. Where was it? In the last page, where you talk about the possibilities of cuts beyond what you're anticipating, I mean, obviously, we're all concerned because there's contracts that need to be negotiated. And there's also, we're not uncertain about state aid that we're gonna get in the governor's budget, and whether the legislature will pass it, and how it will come out in the end. So, we're all kind of operating in a vacuum, as well, we are as well as you yourselves. So, when I look at this list on the back page, you know, some of these I hate to see go, and I'm wondering, additional high school cost consolidation, could you explain to me what you're considering there?
What happens annually is that students in the high school, in the beginning of April, determine their course selections. So, they decide what would be the best path for them academically, and we staff as a result of their choices. We certainly, Bob McCarthy, Rose Majica, who is the guidance department chair, and I get together and review the students' course selections to make sure that we're meeting with their needs and requirements for graduation in balance with efficiencies, certainly taking into consideration that in some areas, Spanish IV, AP Calculus, there might be lower class size numbers. And also, in areas of remediation, like a literacy course or a numeracy course. We do that process every year naturally. When it's forced within the budget, then we have to make those class sizes higher. So, in saying that we would eliminate another full-time equivalent teacher, then we would have to consolidate a full-time equivalent teacher by that many course consolidations. We would have to maybe co-mingle, I think Mrs. Whaley brought up at our December meeting, one of the choices we had to make last year, where students didn't sign up in plenty for a music composition course. So, there were several students who were, that course was eliminated as a part of consolidation, and therefore, the other class sizes were created larger to compensate for that.
So, does it eliminate the opportunity for the child to sign up for the courses, like Spanish IV? You're not gonna eliminate something like that?
Well, it would be inappropriate for me to just sort of pull a course out of the head.
Right.
But what I can say to you is, instead of taking a look and making sure that our course loads are efficient, we would have to overload in some areas, not beyond contractual requirements, but certainly, courses would need to be eliminated. That's what happens at a high school when you decrease staff. You have less options for kids to choose from.
If I could just piggyback on that question. If there is any course consolidation at the high school, is there any reaching out to URI for any of our students to connect with URI, to enroll in some courses?
So, that happens naturally anyway. We try to, guidance counselors sit down with high school students to talk about opportunities that they could have at URI or at CCRI, and there are dual enrollment opportunities. Principal McCarthy and Mary Kelly are starting to look at some virtual learning opportunities. One wouldn't come as a result of a budget, because placing, you know, a student, having a student choose to dual enroll is not an expense to the district. Replacing one of our courses by sending students elsewhere, you'd find, wouldn't be cost-efficient.
Okay. I know that the Department of Education was supposed to move forward with a virtual program last year, and I... a virtual program last year, and it was put on hold for a year. Do you know if there's plans to move forward with that with the Department of Education?
The Department of Education is working on some modules right now in virtual learning to support the proficiency-based graduation requirements. And so, we are expecting those modules to come out in September. As far as pure virtual learning courses, there are certainly companies that RIDE has endorsed, Virtual Learning Academy, for credit recovery and remediation-type virtual learning, and Virtual High School for extensions. But they wouldn't be supported by RIDE financially. They would be supported by individual districts financially.
Okay. And is there anything going on, or any discussion at the school committee table with the diploma-plus program for any children that may have failed a course and they're behind to pick up some extra-cost diploma? I'm sure you're familiar with-
Credit recovery program?
Right.
We are working on some credit recovery programs right now in our high school. Certainly, you know, Mr. McCarthy can give the town council an update in that area. We don't have an extensive alternative high school program. We don't have extensive alternative high school offerings. We're doing the very best that we can within the confines of our budget. We can imagine all kinds of wonderful ways that we'd like to support, but that would mean an extension of items that, quite frankly, we don't have right now.
I'm going to ask one question, and I'm going to defer to other questions before I have probably three or four more. Is there any connection going on with the education exchange in town and our school system? You know, we are familiar with the education exchange. We've been over there as a town council. Absolutely fabulous staff, administrators that are running that. And I know that they're really reaching out to the community. So I was wondering if there's any dialogue going on with the school committee?
There's no direct dialogue with the school committee, but I can certainly write that down to chat with Mary Kelly and Bob McCarthy about and get back to you.
That'd be great. I'm going to defer to other questions before I continue. Jim?
I mentioned earlier that I thought this budget was at high risk. And what I have not heard tonight from either the school committee or my fellow counselors is the following, and sort of a perfect storm. The city of Providence is going to need a lot of help from the state of Rhode Island. I hate to go through numbers, but I'm going to do it for you. Post-retirement healthcare, they've got a million dollars in the bank, a billion, 500 million in liabilities. Their pension, they have less than $300 million in the bank, liabilities of a billion, 200 million. If you've read the papers, you see the word staggering. This means the General Assembly has got to help Providence. And look at the other cities up there. Providence may borrow as much as $70 million for operations. Pawtucket, Wensocket, Cranston, Central Falls, borrowing for operations, not just capital costs. Somehow or another, that's going to come back to bite us, well-run or not. We're going to wind up with less money, as they're going to have to help Providence and the inner core. That's one leg of the stool. I think the education funding formula, we're living on borrowed time. I can't blame the General Assembly members from the inner core from wanting an acceleration of the formula. No matter how the formula winds up, I understand them needing an acceleration. With the recent governor's proposal, what you're doing basically is offering 105,000 of the 140,000 schoolchildren of Rhode Island, an extra $125 up there. Give me a break. You know, that's nothing. It's going to have to, somehow or another, they're going to have to wind up with more money up there. Another leg of the stool. Last year, the state, the balance budget, taxed all of us $131 million on the automobile excise tax. In South Kingstown, for an average home of 340,000, that's a $5,000 real estate bill. If you have two cars above $6,000, that's $206. So all of our citizens, just there alone, got a 4% tax increase. Even though schools were flat, and the townwide budget was up less than a million dollars. 4% hit. $131 million there. You just saw the governor's new budget. $167 million more proposed taxes. That's $300 million in two years that your citizens, and I guess I represent a few of them, $300 million that they've had to absorb if this governor's budget goes through and the excise tax that we received last year. $300 million. I don't know what's left to tax. I do not know. There's no rainy day funds left in most accounts anywhere. And even last year in South Kingstown, of the $950,000 of new money that we raised, half of that came from our businesses, commercial businesses. Gosh, Kristin, I can never seem to get your attention. I'll start again with that.
Jim?
South, south-
There's no need for that.
No, she was conferring with Tony.
Excuse me, excuse me, Kath.
So of the-
Jim, excuse me. We just had a school committee member enter the room, so.
Oh, that's fine. The commercial properties in town picked up half, almost half of the $950,000. These businesses are hurting. They're the businesses that need investment by this community, not more taxes. So putting all those stools on, maybe a four-sided stool or five-sided, that's why I think we're at high risk. And the recent one in the newspaper, you've got to pay attention to Gina Raimondo, and I guess she's kind of copied me, because I've always referred to our problems as a math problem. And you've probably seen that her worries are, when they finish the analysis, that we just don't have a $5 billion unfunded account for pensions, could be as high as $10 billion. These are huge numbers, and we're not even talking about statewide post-healthcare retirement there. So all of these issues, including how little and how much the cities need for their core education, I just think that we've got to be incredibly cautious with our budget. I've said to you earlier, I think it should be less than last year. But I think anything less than closing a school now and bringing this budget down is going to put us in even a more difficult position next year and the year following.
Maureen?
Just a comment. You know, Jim, I don't mind. I don't mind your position. I understand your position. We see things differently. But when you're disrespectful to the superintendent, I take offense to that. And I wish you would stop.
Well, a lot of times, I'm looking at her and talking to her, and she just goes in another direction.
No way, it doesn't matter.
Well, that's too bad, Maureen.
You can show a little bit of respect.
You're not looking at her.
And I will reiterate, there will be respect at this table. Do we have further questions here? Can we get Scott here?
Ella, could I try to provide some general perspective on where we are at this point in terms of the state aid to education for next year? The governor's budget-
Thank you, sorry.
Steve, if you could just wait one second. Okay. I would also thank you for coming, Scott. I know that it's work-related, so thank you for being here. I would also like to make note that we also have Senator Sizniewski here in our audience, and thank her for attending as well. Thank you. Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, I wanted to try to bring us up to date as far as the budget, because the governor's budget does provide a different revenue structure than what we had in the budget document for the town manager's recommended budget that was in accord with the school committee's revised budget. And I just wanted to run through that. I apologize for not having the sheets, but I didn't get the information from the Department of Education until this afternoon. And I wanted to, I'm still going to need to take a better look, because I haven't been able to compute all of the numbers. But essentially, what we're looking at is, the two columns that I have up on the board, J and K. J is the revenue statement that was in the school committee's revised budget and in the manager's proposed budget. So we had a revenue from state and federal purposes of $8,444,000. And you can trace that if you go back to the budget message on my budget document. I think it's on page 31 or 32. The, so what we had anticipated was $8,444,000. And we used the school department's estimate, which at that time was the loss of $375,000 for first year of the implementation of the formula, and secondly, a 5% downward movement. In the governor's budget, what we're looking at is that we'll receive, based on his budget estimate, and again, that's not going to be what the final number may be if the General Assembly makes revisions, $8,391,000. That is inclusive of what used to be the group home aid of the $375,000. There's also a category grant as far as transportation aid of $16,139. But I want to focus on the federal jobs bill income. The federal jobs bill income is money that was available in the 11, 12, or 10, 11 year. If you recall, this was money that was distributed to each of the school districts, and it was to be used to be able to maintain employment or to increase employment within the school sector. The governor at that time, Kuchery, indicated that he was looking to hold back that money in its entirety, so none of the school districts were going to spend on that $420,000. The money is federal money that has to be expended on or before June 30th of 2012. So essentially, what the governor's recommending is that, as a part of the aid for the 11, 12 year, the $420,852 in South Kingstown's case becomes an incoming revenue to the school fund. So that'll mean that the state and federal money will be worth about $8,828,000. Leaving all of the other revenues that the school department had put for local revenue source, inclusive of the $775,000 increase associated with designated funds being used, and assuming that the budget transfer of taxes was up to $306,000, which is what was recommended in the manager's budget, it would give you a revenue statement of $58,818,000 of income. The expenditure statement wouldn't change, because the expenditure statement would be as presented by the school committee with the revisions that had been made for that $648,000 that was changed from the original budget to the manager's budget. So it would mean that there would be a surplus built in to the 11, 12 year of about $383,557. It's not the $420,000, because based on the way the revenue would be coming in, the school department would need approximately $54,000 of those dollars to be able to balance with the expenditure program that they were presenting. So you would end up with a $383,000 surplus. Those dollars, the $420,000, would have to actually be spent in the 2011, 2012 year to ensure that we, because that's a reimbursement-based program from the feds. That money would not change my recommendation as far as the need for funding the $306,000 in the 11, 12 year. And the reason for that is that in the 12, 13 year, and I've just started to do some of the estimating on this, in the 12, 13 year, you would be starting out with the $8,391,000 that you had in the current year. You'd lose the second year of approximately $375,000 for second year of implementation of the formula. Just so everybody's clear, the $375,000 reduction each year for a 10-year period is predicated on the fact that South Kingstown is currently receiving $3,750,000 more in state aid than we should be under the formula. Therefore, that $3,750,000 over a 10-year phase-out would be $375,000 a year that you would lose. So if you started out with exactly the same state aid in 12, 13, and you had the 8.391 million, you'd lose $375,000. You'd keep your transportation money, that $16,000, but you would lose the $420,000 in the federal money, because it would be gone. So essentially, you would be losing approximately $800,000. So you'd be going from 8.8 million in state/federal income in 12, 13 to 8 million. So you've got an $800,000 swing. If you don't have the money available from that surplus, or really holding out the 420, spending the 420, but holding out local dollars of the 420 for the 12, 13 year, the 12, 13 year is going to be a bust year. Each year, what we're attempting to do is to be able to fund a budget and be able to look forward two or three years. When I do the pro forma, if you look to the 13, 14 year, you're still faced with the same thing. You had the $3,991,000, you lost 375, so now your base is down to 8 million, and you're going to lose another 375. So the phase-out that's going to continue to have impact on you on a year-to-year basis. As far as the undesignated fund balance, undesignated fund balance as of June 30th of 2010 was about $2.35 million. We're using $775,000 in a commitment for the 11, 12 year. So on June 30th of 2011, there'll be approximately $1,950,000 left. With that, if you go to the budget for the 11, 12 year of the governor, we'd have to take in the $383,000 as a surplus, because we weren't spending the non-federal, we were spending the federal dollars, but we were holding back local dollars that would have been available. It would allow us to have the fund balance at 1.5 million. It continues to go down, but it would allow it at the 1.5. The bust year starts to occur when you go out, because if you didn't increase in the 12, 13 year, either the expenditure statement stayed the same, which obviously, there's going to be pressure for, unless there's restructure of program, there's going to be pressure to see that expenditure program for the current year have to increase next year if you were running the same exact programs. You would be looking at roughly a $410,000 at minimum, either increase in property tax support necessary, plus whatever increase was necessary. So at that point, if that were to play out, and again, this is just numbers, you'd be down to 760. By the time you get out the following year, you'd be at a negative 400, which obviously we couldn't be. So I guess the most important point that I make is that the 11, 12 year can be funded based on the program that's been laid out. It can return approximately $383,000 that we would need for the 12, 13 year. But the 12, 13 year is still going to be extremely difficult, because you're going to, and each year that you go out further, you're looking at changes. I also think that as we go forward, the reduction in student enrollment will increase the downward climb of the base revenue. Because for every student that you lose, you're losing about $1,400. And why do I say 1,400? I say that because when you look at the funding formula, the funding formula is projecting that they're going to have core education cost of $8,333 next year. And that we're going to have a, just, if I highlight this area here, we've got 30- And that we're going to have a, just if I highlight this area here, we've got 3,498 students, based on what the state is claiming with the formula. And again, I haven't been able to prove out their numbers yet. I'll have to work on that. But if you take their numbers at the 3,498 students at $8,333, it means that the core education expenses for the district would be $29,148,000. The green students that are going out, you lose $25,000 because the money travels with those kids. You pick up with the children that are on reduced or free lunch, an adjustment for the SS factor. The SS factor is worth another, for every, there's 585 kids that you're getting credit for $3,333. So essentially, what the state's formula says is that South Kingston's education cost for the 2011-12 year for core education cost is $31,730,000. What they're also saying is that based on the quadratic equation that they're using, median family income in South Kingston, based on federal figures, is at about $97,000 at this point, which is 134% of what state average is. So what it does is it provides greater downward pressure on what the reimbursement level is. Where last year, if the formula had been implemented, we would have gotten 18% of that $31 million. It's now down to 16.4%. The 16.4% means that it's, the state's education aid formula, if it was implemented today, the question Jim was asking, if they just said, "We're going to implement it, we're not going to have any phase-in," South Kingston's state aid would drop to $5,960,000. And that's $1,367 a student. So essentially, if we weren't in a phase-out period, this formula would say that the education aid money to the town of South Kingston on a per pupil basis would be approximately It would be approximately, let's see, it would be approximately $1,500 for those students that were on the free or assisted lunch program. So that's how that formula will impact us as we go forward. So you're talking about the $3,716,000 that is claimed as overfunding for South Kingston that will be lost over that 10-year period. So it's very important for us to not look myopically at one budget year. It's very important for us to understand that while expenditure programs may be what they are in the program that's been put together for the 11-12 year, there's going to be a need for substantial revision for us to be able to accommodate that through property I think that there will be efforts made from many of the communities that are not in favor of the phase-out in an effort to be able to get more money into those urban areas. Whether they will be successful or not is certainly what's going to play out over the next several months. But even if they were to say, "We're going to phase it out not over 10 years but over seven years," it'll have profound impact on us. If they say it's five years, obviously, it's going to be, instead of the 375, you're up at, you know, 750. So I say each year, it's a budget process. This is the point in time of where we are now. Where we're going to be a month from now may in fact be a little bit different. At least, at least what we're trying to do is to, is to understand what the implications of the formula are and where it's going to take us over the next several years. But I don't see any way possible that the property tax base will be able to accommodate the continued loss of those state dollars with maintaining the same structure that's in place at this point. And I think that, I'm not suggesting how those revisions will be made. The revisions that Alan and I suggested and the school committee agreed to had nothing to do with program. They had to do with, you know, with cost estimates that we felt could be better accommodated. But I wanted to just get this out on the table. One of the other things I want out on the table is, in my budget message, I indicated that on the capital budget, we had recommended a reduction of $70,000 for the capital program. That $70,000 was increased after discussion with administration to $100,000. The reason it was increased to the $100,000 was to allow one of the eight teaching assistants that had been cut out of the budget originally approved by the, by the school committee to be reinstated. The other $70,000, what we recommended was that they consider, based on the surplus position for the 10-11 year, to expend the $70,000 that was for the two computer labs that were originally proposed for the 11-12 year. So that is in place at this point. In my estimate, estimation of the expenditures for the, for the current year, and this isn't just because of economies of the school basis, it's based on adjustments on the cost associated with pension, we're forecasting about a $350,000 to a $450,000 surplus. And I've taken into consideration an additional expenditure of that $70,000 to be able to come up with the numbers that we have. My point is, again, you can't look at one year independent of its influence and impact on the, on the future years. And so we need to keep this in mind as we go forward. But that education aid formula will have and will continue to have profound impact. They're using the tax rule as of December 31 of 2007, which is two year, one year behind where the revaluation was done. So next year, our percent as a share of the state's overall tax base will continue to escalate, even though we'll be three years into the loss of that taxable base. So the impact is going to be there and probably more than 375 next year if in fact, the census confirms what the federal estimates are for median family income in South Kingston. So there's still a really rough road ahead of us. We've managed to this point. We can manage in the 11-12 year. But we have to manage in the 11-12 year in advance of the 12-13 year and to provide reasonable accommodation. And I think that's got to be in everybody's mind as we go forward. Alan, you want to add anything on that?
The only thing I would add is the difference between the 18.1 that we were looking at last year at this time and the 16.4 based on the change in the variables is going to be about 400,000 to 500,000 over a 10-year period that we've lost in addition to what we were expecting last year. So about $50,000 per year.
And as I say, that will continue to escalate as we see downward movement as far as the enrollments are concerned.
Okay, before I jump to Tony and then Jim, can I just ask a question? The school committee, where will those two computer labs be?
High school and middle school.
High school and middle school. Thank you. I'm going to go to Tony. He was first, then Jim.
I just have a simple request, Steve. I saw assumptions out to 13 and 14, but I didn't see the expense assumptions made at that time. I just wanted to get a view of the Excel spreadsheet. I didn't, I didn't, it's...
Yeah, this is a... This is a work in progress at this point, Tony. Again, my, I was not changing anything as far as the expenditure statement was concerned. It stays the same as what, the 58, 434. If that were to go up, certainly the 410 whole would substantially increase. And that could go up just based on pension revisions that could occur.
Thank you.
But the revenue statement is also one in question. That $777,000 is equal to one-third of the value of the projected undesignated fund balance for the school fund. If that fund balance goes down, then obviously, that number goes down and it increases what the exposure would be as far as being out of balance. And that dollar amount has to go down as the fund balance goes down. As you can see, it would drop to about $381,000 the following year. And that's, and this is just, this is just numbers. This isn't looking at three dimension of program. This is looking at just how the numbers would stay if everything was steady state. And as steady state, it doesn't work.
I understand that. I just wanted to get context.
Jim?
Steve, it's widely recognized that real estate boom really didn't end until 2008, the end of 2008. Any way the General Assembly or the Department of Ed could change that base formula to a more realistic real estate market, '09, '10?
I think that the problem that the state has is that they're working off of what the original formulas were several years ago, where there was a two-year back reference, it was two years back as the reference year. So the 2007 role, which was used for the 8-9 year, is going to be the two years back. The reason it was set at two years back was because information was much more difficult to get at that point. So it took the state considerably longer to be able to do all 39 cities and towns. Would they be able to in today's, today's day and age? Obviously, they would. Because we have to report what the certified tax rule is on June 15th of each year. So they would have that, they would have that outside of the fact that the formula does at this point go back with the reference year two years back. I'm not sure whether you could get it to last year. I think it would probably have to go back at least one year, Jim.
Thank you.
Further questions here at the table? I might just have a few more, sorry. In the two computer labs that will be added the following year, do we have a location? I guess I'm really looking at, I know Mattoonik, Mattoonik Elementary School was put on hold for a long time for computer labs.
Is that what you're saying? You're looking out because the two that we envisioned happening next year at the high school and the middle school?
Right, and then the following year?
We're doing this year.
Right, and then what were the other two that was proposed?
Their elementary.
And you don't, you don't need to give me the answer tonight, but you can get back to me. I appreciate it. I just have a few other questions. The number of children on free and reduced lunch, was that the number that you quoted, Steve? 585 or is...
585 is what the state's showing, but I haven't been able to see the detail on that because there's really two classes. One is for the pre-K through six, and then from seven forward, 545, I think, is the overall number. But I need to get clarification from Ride.
Okay. And if the school department can weigh in on that one too with verification? And again, it doesn't have to be right now, Kristin. In the transportation with the state, was that the reduction in your PowerPoint with 150,000?
Actually, in our, our own transportation, we rebid the transportation in district.
Okay.
We do utilize the state transportation system. We have received benefit from being involved in that program. That will continue.
Okay. And is there a cost savings there as well? I know that the, the original year that the Department of Ed helped out with the transportation, it was a cost savings. So again, is it a cost savings?
It continues.
And what is the cost that we will pay the Department of Ed for that transportation?
John actually sits on the board that, that works with the statewide transportation. So I'm going to...
Thank you.
Yeah, our savings with the, with the state transportation really comes in on the special education transportation, the out of district. Because currently, I think we're transporting five students. And prior to the state taking that over, we utilized four buses to transport those five students. So the efficiency in the state system has saved us quite a bit of money.
And is there still the clause where if a district has $58,000 for tuition costs for special education, that there will be some help from the Department of Education? Is that still?
It's, it's a, the, the funding formula has delayed it one year.
That was one piece they didn't include.
And is there any funds that you see dwindling with Medicaid reimbursement? Any cuts that you anticipate?
We're tracking, this year on our Medicaid reimbursement, we're tracking consistent with last year. So we are projecting 800,000 this year, and we look to see the same next year. Some of the reimbursements are down a little bit, but we, we picked it up in other areas on the reimbursement. So we're looking to be about 800,000 on the Medicare.
Okay, thank you. I'll jump to Carol, then I'll come back.
I just wanted to ask about the free and reduced lunch. If I recall last year when we were discussing this, that as the students got older, especially in the high school, they didn't necessarily fill out the forms and apply. Is there any way of getting, getting them to do that? At this point, it means more than just lunch, as we know.
We could certainly make a concerted effort to make certain that youngsters who are eligible for free and reduced lunch receive that benefit. And in some measure, Chartwells is assisting us in that process. Years ago, it was a less confidential process, and now students, parents can put money on account, and that account is, is not seen as different in the lunch line as a Visa debit card adding on lunches or free and reduced lunch. So I think we are capturing many of those youngsters who in the past we didn't capture. But, you know, it's still a lot of outreach from our specialists, our guidance personnel and social workers to work with the families to let them know they're entitled to that money and that certainly, we receive more Title I money and more in our funding formula if those students are identified. And we try to communicate that to families.
So you've seen an increase in getting the kids to fill out the forms and that's, that's what you're saying, Kristin?
Well, the kids aren't filling out the forms.
Well, taking them home to the parents.
Right, and sometimes they're not even the forms that we remember from 10 years ago. Sometimes the Department of Human Services will identify a family that wasn't done before. But yes, we're, we're now, because of cooperative efforts and technology and outreach by our staff, we are seeing more students take advantage of the program. It's hard to tell because unemployment is rising and the economy is, is really difficult right now. So it's hard to track, certainly if we're making a difference with each and every family. But we believe we're doing a better job than we were previously.
Good, thanks.
Any further questions here? Jim?
Just to follow up with Carol's question, Kristin, what is the means poverty level where the free lunch kicks in? Do you know the family?
I don't know that off the top of my head. We have a, I don't, I don't, Steve?
I didn't know if Steve might know.
I'm sorry?
I can get that for you. Jim is asking what the mean poverty level is. I mean, it depends on the number of members in your family and a particular family income, a gross family income. But that variable can change with more members in your family.
Yeah, I did, I just was asking about the free lunch. What level does that kick in?
It's different with every federal program. So we would have to get that through the state's Department of Education as to what they're using as a number.
I just didn't know if they backed down from what they were quoting, the $97,000 for the median family income.
No, it wouldn't have anything to do with us. It would have to do, as Kristin said, what they, what they will work with is a chart that, based on the number of family members. But the starting point is different with HUD programs from what we see with the, with the school program. And I haven't seen what those numbers would be. But just on Carol's point, the free and reduced lunch is factored based on pre-K through six, so that it doesn't take into consideration those where the numbers would be more difficult to get at the, at the middle and high school level. The overall number does have influence, but the, the major impact is associated with the percentage share that we have on PK through six in relation to what the percentage is... share that we have on PK through six in relation to what the percentage is statewide.
Are we restricted to K through six, or will they take into account the entire K through 12?
No, the formula looks at both the gross number, which is system-wide, and then has a second factor that looks at the percentage on the PK through six.
Okay, thank you.
Kristin, could you elaborate where those cuts were with the eight teacher assistance and the one added back? Was that IEP-driven or? If you could elaborate on that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. So we had one per building and .5 at the district level. And so it was a total of 7.5. So originally, we asked for eight. That was what was approved at the school committee table. Further consideration with the town manager to give us some flexibility between seven and eight, because we identified a .5 instead of a full-time at the district level.
Thank you. And is it the intention of the school committee to draft any resolution with any tweaking of the educational funding formula in reference to, you know, data that's used verifying free and reduced lunch numbers, what Steve had elaborated on with the tax roll going back to December 31st, 2007? Is there any, has there been any discussion for movement at the school committee table for a resolution?
We have talked about that, but as Kristin just reminded me, we were waiting for the governor's budget so that we had those numbers. But I expect that that conversation will come back to the table.
So for example, if...
I was gonna say, just, you know, what you've got to understand is that, that whole system moves. With a three-year revaluation, every three years, a community, whether it's A, B, or C, is doing the revale. So every community, where we were, let's say, 20% ahead of Community A, we did the revaluation, we came down. We got closer to A. But when A then does their revaluation, and all the communities are seeing roughly the 17 to 20% reduction, the state is not really interested in changing the reference year from 2007 to 2008, because their opinion is everybody's being treated equally because of the rolling schedule. Because even if we went down 17%, if the other 12 communities, 13 communities that did revaluations in the same year went down by that same percent, we would be impacting the ones that were two years away. But you're really only seeing a very small change overall. That's what the state's opinion is. Obviously, it's whose ox is being gored. If we're down 20% and most of the other communities are down 12%, then obviously it would have impact. If we're at 17 and everybody else is below that, it helps us. So I don't think that the value of the roll is going to make that much of a difference. It's just how long it takes to catch up. It's not going to be until the 13, 14 year that we would have the greatest benefit from the reduction in the roll that occurred for December 31st of 2009. But it's gonna, what comes around goes around.
I know that you analyze that, Steve, to the nth degree. And we had the commissioner here and the town chambers, and I know that there was a concern with the double poverty factor. So we're looking for guidance, and if there is a need that this district can benefit, then, you know, we're looking for your guidance on that, both superintendent and yours. But I know that that was a concern last year with the double poverty factor.
Let me make it clear, I certainly am not in favor of the formula as it currently is presented. I present to you tonight what the formula does, rather than to say that I'm supportive of its efforts. I think that a formula is an appropriate way and something that we need to have statewide, but I'm not necessarily convinced that having communities down to 16% of what the cost is, plus the responsibility in addition to the core to fund another $8,000 per student, is a realistic, a realistic way of dealing with the issue. Because I think that eventually what it does is it's going to create mediocrity in all school systems going forward.
Right, and not that the state has any money, but I know that it would be beneficial for five or six communities if there was a hold harmless clause. So I think that we need to work together, and if there's any legislation that we propose, then, you know, we need to work together so that we can work with our legislators as Further questions here? Or at the town council table? Scott, you've been too quiet. It's because you don't have a microphone in front of you?
No, I've never...
Do we want to pass one down?
He's got the wrong name.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the microphone with any questions from the public. So please come, state your name for the record. Welcome.
Hello? Yep. Okay, I'm standing.
Good evening. My name is Michael Minelli, and I guess this is a question for the school board. What I'm taking away from all these PowerPoints and numbers and formula, it seems that out of 59 million plus, you were able to find $644,000. Is that what this says? Is that 644 a one-time savings effort? Is it a first iteration, a second, a third? Or are we just resting with 644,000 out of 59 million? And is there anything structural that prevents us from going further? Without getting into the students, as I see, if additional reductions were to be considered, most of these go to the students. So my question is, can we get more?
644,000 are actual program cuts. And so there have not been structural changes. We are in the midst of negotiating three contracts. They will happen after this budget cycle, and we're doing a reconfiguration advisement committee with the community that will impact the following year's budget forward.
It seems that last year, we were standing here, and I believe the school committee was beseeching the town for about $900,000, an additional tax levy, where you were saying that that's all we need for us to get our act together for the next year. I think it's surrounded the closing of some school.
Last year, we received zero increase in the transfer to schools.
I understand that. And you were still looking for, I believe, I thought I was sitting here, another 900,000 to save some school down the street? Forgive me, I'm relatively new to the area. Okay, I guess I got that.
Jump in, correct me if I have this wrong, but...
Maybe it was another town.
No, it was his town, but I think the question at the time was whether state aid would be significantly cut. And so if it was, then we would have to look at something huge, like closing a school, without having the opportunity to be very thoughtful about that with the community.
I see.
We cut $1.2 million worth of programs and staff last year to come within that zero, as our costs have increased and our collective bargaining unit was in its third year. And so what ended up happening is the governor was proposing with the commissioner the funding formula. And you've seen the impact of what the funding formula would do. We had to make contingency plans beyond our budget being approved by the school committee and the town council. We also had a governor's supplemental budget last year. So although we were, for lack of a better word, promised X amount of dollars for state aid, created our budget, started our budget year, in the middle of our budget year, they pulled more money out. We had to accommodate that.
And going forward, there's going to be some structural efforts involved here?
That's what the planning effort is.
I mean, we just don't have the demographic to fit the state formula, like a Central Falls, or a Pawtucket, or a Providence, where we don't have the demographic. We're going to keep getting pounded by that formula.
Correct. Other districts will be funded more greatly, and ours, we will lose funding over a 10-year period. Our best-case scenario right now, if the funding formula stays in effect, is to make certain that it's elongated as long as possible, so the impact is not devastating in each and every single budget year. It's also very important that we put pressure on folks to continue to fund us our group aid, which was included, group home aid, excuse me, which was included in the governor's recommended budget this year. Not all communities have group homes, and we certainly need that reimbursement to be able to, as revenue.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Hi, Michael Muchler. More of a comment than a question. I've been, the last couple of years, going to almost all of the school committee meetings and stuff, so I've watched them work through this process. And in the last couple of years, it's been really functioning under a crisis mode to cut as much as they can in the budget. And that process has gone, you know, into and through May, without necessarily really having the time to thoughtfully work out a plan of reconstructuring our schools, which will save us some money. And that's not going to solve all of our problems, and particularly for the, you know, that we're going to be losing a lot of money over the next 10 years. So that's only one answer. But that reconstructuring our schools is a big one, because it will affect our community, it will affect families, and most of all, it's going to affect our kids. So it's not something to be done under the crisis mode of saying, you know, this year, right now. And regardless of what hasn't been done, or has been done in the past, it's, we're here right now, and what we do from this point on is what really matters. So I think the school board has put a lot of effort into developing a plan and a direction, and they're moving that way. And it's fortunate that we're in a situation, and we actually have a little bit of time here to do it. And we don't have to function this year under the crisis mode that the last, at least the two years that I've been going to the meetings, they've been, they've been under that type of pressure. So I think it's, it behooves the town council to work with the school board and help them, you know, work through this process of school consolidation as one of the many steps that they're going to have to do. But there's, we're going to have to get creative. I mean, it's, everybody's going to have to give, there's, you know, it's going to have to come from the taxpayers, it's going to have to come from the teachers and the employers that work for the school and work in the community. And we're going to have to even get creative beyond that and come up with some other ways of bringing in some additional revenue into the town of South Kingston, because it's going to take everything, and it's going to take the town council and the school committee working together real well to make it all happen. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Carol?
My name's Harold Grist from Green Hill. I have two questions. First is on your charter school enrollments. I noticed there's a note down below, it says includes the Green School, which opened in 2010. I understood there was a freeze on additional charter schools. How do we get a new one? Does that mean that we have three charter schools now in South Kingston?
This charter school's on Alton Jones campus in West Greenwich, but each charter school opens up to different portions of the state. Although we have two in our community, one of them, the Compass School, is a statewide school. So the Green School, as I understand it, is statewide. And to answer your question, the charter school enrollment opened last year. So now there is not a freeze.
Okay. What is it costing us per student? I know the state pays some, but we have to pay.
Charter school? Are you asking, what is it costing us to send a child to charter school?
For 108 students, what is it costing us?
It's $10,667 per student.
My next question is to do with undesignated funds. Steve may have shot me out of the water on this one, but for the town, we've contributed, the town has contributed $1,200,000 for the new budget. It brings their general fund percentage to 12.33%. Steve is saying that, if memory serves me correct, that the guidelines say it should be approximately 16%. My question to you is in regards to your contribution to your, from your fund of 775,623? No, 623. How did you come up with that figure? Do you have a percentage that you have to stay within? Do you have guidelines that you follow?
Our typical guidelines have been to stay at 25%. This year, it was raised a little bit because of the size of the fund balance and the financial situation that we're in. So it's at 30% this year.
Because what I'm thinking is, you know, why couldn't you make it a hundred, another, instead of 735, make it 800,000?
The school committee certainly could make it 800,000. They made a decision to make it 775,000, because it was 30%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Hi, Frances Crowley, Mattoonik Beach Road. A lot of people spend a lot of time on budgets, and there's a lot of things going on. But I sat through Steve's presentation a week ago, and I'm referring to page 30 of his budget worksheet, and my two favorite topics, salaries and benefits. We were told that the teacher head count, the FTE count, was going down 10 this year from last year, actual. And you're coming up to the end of a contract, perfect time to negotiate with the unions. Yet I see that the number for the salaries for this year, final estimate versus what the budget is, goes up $400,000?
That's a result of step increases?
Okay, well, that brings up, okay, fine.
We're actually budgeting 0% salary increase on all three collective bargaining agreements.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you, steps, what's the increment between step one and step two and step three and step four? It seems like it's two raises.
I don't have that, I don't have the contract in front of me, but it's available online, so you can...
Okay, but I guess my point is this, and I'm glad you raised it. You've got these steps, one through 10. So every year, somebody for showing up gets 2.5 or 3%. You know, they go from one year to two years to three years. Then on top of that, you're going to have a contract where you're going to hopefully freeze wages and not put another increase on top of that. So I guess my question would be, why don't I go back on the steps and reduce those, too? Tie them into something like the CPI.
Certainly, we'll write that down to consider in terms of...
Oh, good, okay. And then additionally, and probably more importantly, benefits. I think that the teachers pay somewhere between 6% and 8% or 9%.
This budget actually looks to increase that to 20% co-pay for all collective bargaining.
And, but still, I see only a reduction of 500,000, 590,000. I think part of that is because of the...
Retirement costs.
Oh, that's retirement, but didn't you do some consolidation on benefits, too?
The benefits cost on page 30 is showing that it was down 590,000.
590,504, yeah, I've got that number right here. Okay, so that includes the savings to be realized from the contract reduction?
That's correct.
Okay. So what we're saying is that the 400,000 is steps. So in essence, there still would be a $400,000 pass-through and raises to the teachers this year?
Two steps.
Okay, that's a raise, okay.
41,000.
All right. And then one more question, even though I'm old, what's an assistant principal do? You've got three of them in the high school. That sounds like a good job. What do they make? That's probably the great deciding factor here.
You know, I have a son in the high school, and I don't want to diminish the importance of assistant principals.
I'm just...
They're, you know, this is still quite a large school, 1,100 students. Now, I can't say that, what is the optimal number, and that I have to, you know, defer to the superintendent. But, you know, the assistant principals help with curriculum, they manage student body disciplinary issues. They're important in regards to... they, they manage student body, disciplinary issues, they're important in regards to monitoring outcomes of instruction. You know, eleven hundred students for one administrator, I think you would guarantee that you'd have a failing high school.
Geez, I went to school a long time, I never saw an assistant principal, I just, we survived, but, and also, no, quite honestly.
Education's gotten a little bit more complex.
Oh, I don't see how it could have. The bright, the bright group I went with, we drove them all crazy. No, I, I just think that when you look at.
[laughter]
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, no, I, I think when you look at places to cut, and you see something like that, I mean, the teachers are obviously the first line of education, but you look at the supplemental or the assistants, I think that, I understand that you've got a fixed number, but you've got some latitude in there, and I would think that would be a great spot to start, so, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I remember, you know, for years, I've been talking about the students coming from URI to our, our school district, and no money's coming in, because they're living in rental property at, owned by University of Rhode Island, okay? And so we're not getting one penny from the, those families where they're sending their children here. This is a time of the year, I think, when we're in trouble on financials, and we need help. Somehow or other, we're going to have to put pressure on the University of Rhode Island to give up some of that rental money for the students that are in our system. Is it, we're talking about an average of, what, twenty, twenty units that are in our system now? That's the last I knew. I don't know, Alan probably knows how many we have now.
Yeah, I think the last time we talked, it was around twenty. I don't have the current number, though.
Yeah. Yeah. But, but we need to put pressure on URI, get some of that rental money.
Thank you. Scott?
Let me just respond, Harold, to your point, because over the years, we've talked about that as a concern. Given the state's reduction in support for post-secondary education, the state of Rhode Island, last statistics that I looked at, provides less support for post-secondary education than any other state in the country. So in some respect, we're leading the pack to the bottom. I'm not sure that the University of Rhode Island is in a fiscal position to be particularly helpful, but I think that there is a fairness question about the presence of the university within the town and additional costs that don't get reimbursed in any way. So it's not a difference about the substance of the issue, but I am well aware of the university's difficulties in getting support out of the state. To this previous speaker, if I can offer a tongue-in-cheek response, we love volunteers at the, in the school system, and it sounded like you were going to be the first in line, and I think that's great. Frankly, the presence of staff keeps our school safe and keeps children learning well. When you begin to see them as superfluous to the mission of the schools, I think you misunderstand how significant those educators are. It, it is certainly true that we could cut all of them, and frankly, I guess we could cut the principals, too, because they're not sitting in a classroom. But at some level, you need to decide what the core elements are to run a successful school, and I wouldn't cut the way you just suggested. I think that those people make a significant contribution, both to the safety of our students and to the educational outcomes for our students.
I'm the parent of a high school student and a middle school student. Just wanted to start with kind of a conclusion, and then just a couple of quick points. I think this is a responsible budget. I think it's, it's a budget that's made some hard choices. I mean, this is the same rerun we've had year after year. We've made cuts, they're not easy cuts, and I'm, I've just, I spent some time before I came over tonight, going through my clippings and my, my, my save file from past years, we've cut, made a lot of cuts, and I, I think this is a responsible budget, and I commend you guys for putting it together, and I, I ask you to support it. I think it's a reasonable request. It's not a perfect budget, there isn't one right now. I do think, speaking as a parent, I think a lot of what you heard in this room last year, and I do remember, the gentleman was asking about the, the brouhaha we had here last year, and we had a good brouhaha, but a lot of that was really a desire for planning. We didn't want quick decisions, and I commend you, on the school committee, for asking for a year to make some, some long-term plans. We need the time. And I think the problem has been, it's been, you know, essentially a shifting goalpost. We don't know from year to year what we're going to get, we, every time we know something, they change it, and the supplemental budget comes along, they take stuff back. We need the extra year. So I'm, I'm really encouraged to hear that you're not planning any drastic changes for this coming year. I would not want to close a school of any ilk this year. You need time to plan. I, I really think that supporting this budget is, is reasonable. It makes cuts, there's painful cuts in here, there's no fun in this budget. There was no fun in last year's budget, where we've cut a lot of teaching assistants, we've cut a lot of faculty, we've cut custodians, we, I'm looking through recent stuff, we've, at the high school, we've consolidated courses, we've consolidated language courses. I used to take Latin there, we can't do that anymore. We don't take Japanese and Chinese the way we used to. This, this is a system that is downsizing, and I think you guys are doing the best job you can, under the circumstances, which are unenviable. But there's something that came up in the commentary tonight, which I think is very useful to think about as you think about supporting this budget, which is that if we cut further, if we continue to pare, then we make our school system look far less attractive. And the net potential cost of that is that people could choose to send their kids to those lovely charter schools, and we're already sending five kids to the Green School, and I'm going to guarantee you, if you cut the assistant principals at the high school, we'll be sending more than five, because you'll have a different learning environment, okay? And if you, if you cut additional programs, you consolidate courses, there are fewer options for kids to take classes, you're going to make the South Kingston Public School System less attractive relative to its competitors, and we do have competitors. And I think the key thing to remember is, every time one of those kids chooses something else, we fork over ten thousand, six hundred dollars. I want to keep them here. I want to keep them here, because we can educate them here, but also, because I don't want to be sending ten thousand, six hundred bucks to somebody else every time somebody makes that choice. So this is, I think, a responsible budget that, that keeps us afloat. And on the, just a quick rebuttal on the assistant principal front, I, you know, I think the, the assistant prin, the high school is far stronger today than it was five years ago. Let's just cut to that. Bob McCarthy and his staff have done a fabulous job, my daughter's having a great year there. I, I think it's a, it's a really strong school, and more importantly, I think, to echo something that Scott said, it's a safe school. It wasn't always. And I graduated from the school, I was, you know, it's had its ups and downs over the years. And, and I think we're in a good spot, and I think we have a great principal and a great team, and they do a lot of meetings. Part of, you know, the big question of what do they do, it's a lot of mandatory meetings, special ed meetings, all sorts of things, counseling meetings, and, and attendance and discipline. And they do a good job keeping track of who's where and what they're doing. And I think when we cut that, we fundamentally change the nature of that school. And so I really, I, I support the budget, I encourage you to support the budget, I think it's, I think it's the best we can do under some very difficult circumstances. Thank you.
He's always a tough act to follow. Somehow, I always end up following him. Jonathan Daley-Lavelle. I just have a couple items I'll, I'll try to get to here without taking up too much time, but the company that, I don't know who I'm asking this question to, but who's the company that does the video recording and, you know, getting that rebroadcast online?
Quirkpace.
That is, okay, that's Quirkpace? Okay. I don't know if, this might be a question to be answered at a later meeting, but what was the cost of getting that implemented? I guess I'm wondering what the startup cost is, and I don't know if there's a, an annual cost to that as well.
Can you, can you call my office tomorrow?
Okay.
So I'll have it.
Sure, okay. Do you have a ballpark number?
Twelve thousand to a year, and then probably six thousand a year, zero.
That's, is that on the town side and the school side, or it's two separate fees?
Last time.
Okay. Is it similar for the school?
We, we were able to piggyback on the town, on the town, because the question's very similar to it.
Okay. So, you know, there's a cost there, you know, all that myself, all, every taxpayer in town is paying for the benefit of that, of having those meetings rebroadcast, and, you know, I do hear that people use it. I don't know if there's been any official research to say who uses it, how, you know, how many clicks and that kind of a thing, how many different individual users, but anecdotally, you know, I hear that it's, it's, you know, pretty popular, people are using it. So I just have a concern with, and, you know, I don't know, so it is budget-related, I don't know if this also falls under, under matters of other concerns or such, but I'm just concerned that the school committee is going to a one, one meeting a month that's going to be recorded and re-televized. The second meeting, I guess, is going to a work session format, which I certainly know I'd have a problem with, you know, certainly can be, it's a different format, different conversations, but it's a concern that it's not being recorded and, and not available. You know, the only way you'd really have full knowledge of that would be to go to the meeting. And we can see that attendance, you know, decent tonight, but it's not phenomenal, and there's, I know that there's a lot of people that are using it online. So I don't know if that's, it is a piece of the budget, it's also a piece of the process. So I don't know if that's something that the town ends up being interested in or not, but it's, it's something that I'm concerned with. You know, as far as the state funding piece, just to speak to that a little bit, and, you know, sometimes I miss little pieces, has the transportation cost been factored into the funding formula? It is not, okay. No, okay. So I'm guessing that that might be, I'm, I'm looking forward to the, the mandate and funding conversation. I don't know if, you all just throw it there, the hold harmless, if, if communities were held harmless, which was brought up, you know, what would the cost to that be to the state? It's in the millions, I know, but in a way, is it also passing the responsibility on to the municipalities? And I guess I'll just say, you know, in defense of that concept, you know, I feel, and maybe there's an analysis done somewhere, but I do feel that the suburbans that are losing, you know, we do more than carry our weight, you know, in, in running this state. You know, we're not, I, I have to believe that we give more than we receive on kind of a global basis. And then the last piece, as far as the state funding, if I'm understanding that eventually the state is going to say that they're going to give us a thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars per student to educate our children, I think that really ends up leading us to saying, you know, at what point do we say, you know, keep your money, forget your mandates, we're going to do a nice job here in South Kingston, you know, forget about all the state mandates. However we set up our school system, which I guess is going to be talked about here, our kids are going to get a good education because of the nature of the community. So at some point, you say, you know what, you're costing us way more than, than you're giving us, and maybe we're not there yet, but I think it should start to be talked about, because it seems like that's the direction we're going. And I guess just because, you know, we have been talking about the strategic planning and the, you know, the long-term planning, and I guess I just ask, you know, to the school committee, you know, I like the long-term vision, you know, not being under pressure this year, you know, a couple of people have talked to that, not reacting to budget pressures, trying to look out down the road how the system's going to be set up. Definitely appreciate that, and I guess I just asked, you know, be cautious to make sure that there's enough in the evaluation and community participation side of things before you get into the implementation. So I don't know if I'm saying that clearly, and I know you want to, whatever the plan is, I guess I just want to say it again, so it's clear in my own head, whatever the plan is, you want to have enough time to implement, but make sure that you have enough time to come up with the best plan while still leaving yourself enough time to implement properly. And thank you very much, it is very trying times, and I appreciate your service.
I'm sorry, Steve, I missed the dog waste portion in the evening last night, I couldn't make it last night.
I could present it again.
Well, I saw the part where you said, thank God, nobody's commenting, because I might have, but. I don't really have any serious problems with the budget, other than I thought school consolidation was a good idea. I would rush it, I don't say rush it through, because you've been talking about it for almost two years. So I don't think that's really that big of a rush. Plans were drawn up, bus routes were planned, so that aside, I've already said that, I don't need to go over that again. I would, I would be in favor of consolidating this coming year. But the one number that, it was alluded to, but no one's really talking about, is that you're making a huge assumption in the budget. You're assuming the union is going to take no pay raise, and they're going to pay twenty percent. So if that goes through, fine, the budget's great. If that doesn't go through, well, we're in for a world of you-know-what. So I just want, I, I don't know if everybody in the audience is aware of that, I'm sure all of you are, but those numbers are in serious flux. So in previous years, I know one of your biggest complaints was that, year to year, number one, there was no funding formula. Now we got one, we don't really like it, but at least we know we're going to get the short end of the stick ahead of time. We don't know how bad, I guess, but we still know we're going to get the short end of the stick. The other thing is, the contracts with all the three bargaining units run to the end of August every year. Whose, is that something that is part of negotiations? Can you change that date? Is that a school committee thing that you can do, change it so the contracts run? That you have to renegotiate the contract by such and such a date? That's a state? You can, you can do that. So, I mean, I, I don't know what the best date would be, because teachers work till the end of June, but it would seem to me that if you're planning a budget and you have to have it finalized, and you have a contract coming up, it would be in the committee's best interest to have an altered negotiation strategy so that you know ahead of time. So, I mean, that's just a, you know, observation. Anyway.
I think that the school committee has noticed the difficulty in the past of having a contract end date that is at the, essentially, the first day of school. But in order to reach a deal, both parties have to agree on all of the changes in the contract, and if I were on the other side of the bargaining table, I would be wildly enthusiastic about having the contract end at the first day of school. So it's probably not common ground between management and labor.
I can see why.
That's where we are.
But, I mean, as a, you know, just as a citizen, and someone who likes to plan budgets even on a smaller scale, I mean, it's pretty hard. It's going, I mean, you're making assumptions, so I understand your problem, and I, good luck with that.
I have a quick question that I didn't catch as I walked in on, with the spreadsheet up with a couple of different variations of, of the budget. I have a question about which revenue figures the town is going to use to determine the school transfer when it comes to the, the state aid resulting from the funding formula. I looked at, I think if we go through the original process, we saw at one number, it was going to be eight hundred and eleven thousand short on state aid. The original funding formula was like three hundred and sixteen short. Which, which number are you, are you using now that the governor has talked about the -- fully funding, the funding formula? Is it, are, are we looking at a contingency of holding on to another half a million dollars, or is that? Basically, I'm looking at the total state and federal, um, line in orange right there. There's a couple of different numbers there. At, at some point, one of those numbers is going to get plugged in to the, to calculate the school transfer. It, is, at, at what point, and which number are you using at, at this point?
At this point, the school budget is what's presented under the column that says Town Manager Proposed, which is the eight million four hundred and forty-four thousand.
Okay.
What I indicated was, based on the governor's budget, that it will be eight point eight million dollars that we should receive. Of that, four hundred and twenty thousand of it is a one-time federal money that, uh, would come in. That money has to be spent prior to, uh, June thirtieth of two thousand and twelve. My recommendation would be that they, uh, whether they use the governor's budget or not, they, uh, they continue to get the three hundred and six thousand dollars in additional property tax dollars that I had recommended, and that we return, uh, we budget, uh, so that three hundred and eighty-three thousand of that, four hundred and twenty thousand would be held in balance for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen year. And what I had said is that I think that that's necessary, because when we lose the four hundred and twenty thousand in twelve thirteen, and we have the second year implementation of the formula, you're going to be out by, uh, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, eight hundred thousand dollars. And because this eight, uh, million three hundred and ninety-one thousand is this number here, less than three seventy-five. So what you end up with is that you would, uh, still be four hundred and ten thousand dollars short, even though there was no increase in the estimated expenditures.
Okay.
The question, you know, the question is, uh, are you going to budget to surplus in a year? And my answer to you is, my recommendation would be that they do budget to surplus, because if they were to say, gee, we don't need the three hundred and six thousand dollars that was put in at the time that we were preparing the budget in advance of the governor's budget, then we would, uh, be another three hundred and six thousand dollars behind the four hundred and ten next year. So you'd be, you know, looking at a minimum of an eight hundred thousand dollar, uh, revenue shortfall without looking at the expense statement.
Okay, and we, we've talked about this, I think, every year, so, uh, in, in effect, basically, we're, we're, we're looking at, uh, the governor's, uh, we're, we're going to get taxed twice, basically, if, if we do that, recognizing that it's going to be carried forward into some point in the future, although we have no idea what's going to happen two years from now. Anyway. Next question, uh, the budget was based, the original process started with a, a million six, um, shortfall, which was based on a whole bunch of assumptions, including that first one, the eight hundred and eleven thousand shortfall in, uh, in state aid. One was an increase in, in healthcare spending, seven hundred thousand dollars, which, in the presentation was projected at four percent, although the four percent wasn't seven hundred. It's since been modified down by three hundred thousand to the, the most current budget that I saw, um, at the last school committee meeting. Still, that's m- more than the four percent, and, uh, which is the number, which would bring, it's about a hundred thousand dollars more. And there's also a, a reference to, uh, a twelve employee reduction in headcount, which is about two percent. Two percent active employees would also not be incurring healthcare costs, although they, they might see COBRA or, uh, some things hitting, um, the OPEB. But the, is there any consideration for that? And really, are, it's, again, are we overshooting on a, on a, on a budget line item? And, um... Last question is pension-related and, and, um, I'm forty years old, I've been in the private sector since I got out of college. Uh, I've been funding my own pension with my employer's match since I got out of college. I've also been contributing to social security, and that's been matched by my employer. And if you take what I have in my 401K and what I can expect from social security, which is, which is a leap to expect that, but what it's telling me that I can expect anyway, the actuarial, actuarial value of that, using the same look-forward assumptions that we have right now, is at least double what the actuarial value for a, a forty-year-old teacher in the system. And when I retire, I'll be able to collect more from my own that I've put in at about thirty percent less cost on a, on a contribution basis than the pension will provide for that same teacher in retirement. In addition, when I die, I'll have something to leave to my children, my estate, whatever. A pension system doesn't provide that. My point is that we're, we're funding, we're continuing to increase funding into a system that doesn't provide the benefit on the outside stream, and it doesn't, and it costs a lot. I have a very pointed question, that's, that's more of a statement. The, the most, the budget submitted by the governor, again, requires a, a two percent increase in the teacher's contribution to the pension system. It's also requiring a two percent increase in our contribution, which was based off an actuarial study two years ago. If, if we have a hundred percent funded system, why are we taking the two percent twice? That's, I, 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 I know the answer, but we're taking two percent more from, out of the teacher's pay based on the general assembly budget submitted, and we're being asked as, as taxpayers in South Kingston to pay for two percent. Either one should bring that, that, that pension fund, which I, again, I don't think is, is, is the right way to, to provide a retirement. But now we're being asked twice to fund it, one by the teachers, one by the taxpayer for this two percent. It's a five hundred thousand dollar increase in spending, um, and, and it's going to come out of the taxpayers' checking accounts, and it's going to come out of the teacher's salary if the budget goes through as written. There's one piece of language in, in the bill that I had in front of me, I don't have it right now, that says, um, we, as a town, can't change our contribution based on what happens from that legislation. Yet, is there any consideration to pushing our legislators to, to change that language, where it says that we can, we can reduce our contribution?
Scott?
Um, at, at, at some level, on the, the pension system, um, sits at the state level rather than at our level. That doesn't mean that we can't advocate, um, for changes. I guess, I, as just one member of the school committee, um, I came in in time to hear some of, of Jim's commentary, and in fact, and Jim offers, um, frequent comments about the pension system. Um, one of the things that he said is that Treasurer Ramondo really can't identify the shortfall, um, when you're operating somewhere between five billion, ten billion, that's a pretty wide range. And I would be hesitant to be advocating for changing contribution levels beyond what has been proposed until she completes the review of the pension system and we know exactly where we are. Then it seems to me we have a more grounded discussion about the shortfall in the pension system, um, and that permits us to have the conversation about whether the pension is the most effective way of providing security for the, for us, for our employees that are members of the pension system. But with, with really only question marks now, I would be hesitant to be taking positions about reducing contribution. I think that, um, sh- her initial, um, comments on review have been cautious and deeply concerning, and, and I frankly, um, view her call and the governor's call for increased funding of the pension system as prudent, pending the, um, final answers about where we are. Clearly, where we are is not where the projections, um, for the pension system led anybody to believe we are. So I, my feeling is, let's let that work go forward. I'm very impressed by the rigor of the work that's being done, um, and in one of the only times in recorded history that you will hear this, I agree with Jim. The pension system is, I think, the largest concern out there for us, um, but I want to know the detail of that concern before we take a look at making adjustments.
You're going to be quoted.
Yes, I did. Yes, I am. I mean, there's a lot of numbers going around. Uh, I think it's clear to you that the federal, state, city, town governments are going to be crawling through the fiscal swamp for the next two or three years. There's going to be no more fiscal certainty next year than there is this year, nor the year after, nor the year after, as stimulus drops off, as tax receipts drop off, as employment doesn't, I mean, it's going to go on and on. What I do want to say to you, if you're going to restructure the school system, don't diminish the schools. Let me go there. This gentleman said, eh, you can't get Latin, you can't get Chinese, you can't get Japanese anymore. Leave behind for the kids a school they can remember and be proud of. Don't keep taking away from them. I've looked at this slide on additional cuts if necessary. It talks about eliminate intramurals, eliminate grade four and five instrumental in chorus, take away a librarian, something about tech computer labs, take away a guidance counselor. This is all stuff that goes to the students. Leave them alone. In nineteen fifty-two, I started classical, and I went through four years of Latin, Greek, three French, three Italian. I started calculus in the ninth grade. I loved that school. I don't even think about Brown University or Columbia University later anymore. Classical all the way. And it's the only school ring I wore until I had to cut it off because I was going into surgery for something. And it's, it's at the jeweler now, being put back together in a bigger size. Leave the kids alone, give them back a school they'll remember and want to go to reunions every year if they can, or every, semi-annually. Restructure bold, brave frontiers where nobody's gone before. Forget all the numbers, I mean, that's nonsense. It's blah, blah, blah. And whether it's four hundred and forty thousand, or I'm sorry, nine hundred thousand, wherever I got that from, uh, do a job for the kids. I, I call them kids, they're young adults, well, some of them are kids. It's, I got to keep remembering, this is K through twelve. So give them back the school. So there.
Thank you, Mike, so beautifully stated. Further questions from the audience? Any further questions here at the table? Um, I just have one last question, um, and I just want to make some statements. Are there any cuts with RIIB, Rhode Island Education Assistance Program, to support the student assistance counselors? Are there any cuts at the state that will affect that? There's not. Okay. Um, I just want to thank the school committee and the town council, and a very participatory audience tonight, as well as Dr. Kristen Stringfellow, and John, and Stephen Allen, Andy, all of the town staff, Dale. I'm personally thrilled that the school committee is looking at a long-range plan with this community focus group. Um, I'm actually ecstatic about that, um, and if at some point, maybe it can be reflected in some minutes with what some of the topics that that, um, group is discussing, that would be helpful. I also just want to make a statement, attending some of the school committee meetings, that using the undesignated fund balance, the school committee has really taken a close look at replenishing what is used in future years, so kudos to the school committee for really looking at, um, using the undesignated fund balance, but also replenishing that and looking out multiple years, um, to make sure that, that fund stays afloat. Um, I also want to, um, stress the importance of looking at achievement data, um, and how important that is as the taxpayers' dollars are being spent, so that we do have accountability, um, and the school committee has accountability for spending every dollar. And I'm hoping that at some day, that we can all, at both tables, look at the future and try not to focus as much on the past. I think we, we, history, we need to look at the past, but I think we really need to focus more of our energies at looking at the future and the long-range plan. Um, I think that we have some work to do, um, and I'm sure that Steve and Alan, along with John and Kristen, will be analyzing that educational funding formula, um, and I think that maybe there will be some reprieve there, and maybe reaching out to our legislators. And last couple of things. Do we want to possibly, Steve, look at some future meeting dates with our legislators? We have to, bottom line, put together a preliminary budget we will be approving on Monday, and, uh, I'm not going to use the words that is so quoted over and over and over again, both at this table and that the budget is the process. I'm going to try to stay away from stating that, but we do know that we have, um, we won't know the bottom line until June, so we could, need to continue to work together and, you know, work for June when we, we need to finalize things. So any further comments before we adjourn? Alan?
Yeah, Alan, I, I was just working on it when Jonathan was asking some questions as far as the total loss of state aid, and without Central Falls, because according to the formula, Central Falls loses two million three hundred and sixty-five thousand. I'm not sure that's going to be realistic based on their situation right now, but the fifteen schools other than Central Falls Public School Systems, it's a two point two million dollar loss, so when you add in Central Falls, it's a total of four point six million in the first year of funding. We're at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We are the second largest loss in the state. The only one that is greater than us is the Bristol Warren School District. They're at seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but there is some regional bonus, I don't have that breakdown, so I believe that reduces the seven hundred and eighty-eight. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But we are the second largest in the state as far as the loss, and that represents sixteen point six percent of the total state loss, other than Central Falls. That kind of puts it into perspective.
That's very helpful. And it's even more helpful, um, that we have a senator sitting in our audience, so thank you again to Senator Sizniewski for attending this budget work session.
Could I just make one comment before we do leave?
Sure.
The, uh, the point that Roland was asking about, we would not be having an unbalanced budget that would have less expense than revenue. What we would really do is to have the school department recognize undesignated fund balance by the three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars less. So the budget would be an adopted revised budget, and it would, because the money would be spent, the federal money has to be spent, it's just that you would be taking in as an appropriation, less dollars from your fund balance. That would allow the fund balance to... the fund balance to increase if you did not appropriate it, because then it would come back to fund balance anyway. So there would be a balanced budget. My point was that that three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, if we don't recognize that those dollars are needed in the twelve-thirteen year, we're not taxing people twice. That's an incorrect statement. What we would be doing is we would be taxing people three hundred and six thousand dollars less, and the following year, we would have to charge three hundred and six thousand dollars more than we had the prior year. So you would be doubling up. So instead of eight hundred thousand, you would be down the eight hundred thousand plus the additional three hundred thousand. So I want to make that clear, that there is no recommendation for an unbalanced budget. It's an adjustment on the revenue statement, and the adjustment would be associated with the undesignated fund balance.
Thank you. Further comments before we adjourn? Carol?
Yeah, I just want to add to what Steve said. And the reason why the recommendation is not to include that in the budget for eleven-twelve is because based on the scenario that Steve laid out, even if the expenditure side of the budget remains at the current year level out through thirteen-fourteen, you're going to have an eight hundred thousand dollar revenue structural deficit. And that is using one-point-five million dollars for the twelve-thirteen year. When you come to thirteen-fourteen, you're only going to have seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars left, but you have a base of one million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand. So if we think things are bad now, thirteen-fourteen is when it really hits.
I think the last comment is, what we need to do is to manage on a year-to-year basis. And I think that we've been successful in being able to recognize where the dollar reductions were going to occur and still not have profound impact on program. And that's what our intent is. It's not to double tax people.
Any further comments, Scott?
You too, Carol.
Do you mind if I jump to Carol and then Scott?
Now, I'm losing my train of thought. But the undesignated fund that we're talking about is the, is the schools, right now, it's at one million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine with this year's, but with them taking out seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-three. Is that right?
That's correct.
And now, how low can it go before it's too low? I mean, like with our undesignated fund, we have to keep our Moody rating, and we have to keep a certain percentage in there. Do they have the similar restrictions?
The general fund should have about sixteen-point-six percent, which is two months of the twelve months of either expenditures or revenue intake. The school fund doesn't necessarily need those types of dollars. What we had suggested, when the amount of undesignated funds within, was in the range of a million dollars, that no more than twenty-five percent be taken so that you'd have four years of future to be able to deal with before it would have been lost. Based on the size of this, because of the changes with the pension and the reductions in the expenditures for two years ago, as well as in current year expectation, with two-point-three million, we said you can go to a third. Because you're still going to have to phase back. You're not going to do it over three years, but you've got sufficient funds to be able to go five years. You've got to have some type of a surplus position there, because if you were using seven fifty and you didn't have it the following year, that would be a structural deficit. So what the best thing to do is to have that go down each year. So if it's seven fifty, then it would go down to five hundred, go down to four. At minimum, you'd want to keep probably somewhere in the area of a million dollars available within that fund balance.
But what you're saying, Steve, is the extra three hundred and eighty-three dollars, or the four twenty, which we have to use, which leaves the three eighty-three, you want to put that back in the undesignated fund. Is that correct?
I'm saying it'll go to undesignated funds if it's audited. If it's appropriated and audited, it's going to go back to undesignated funds. I'm saying if you don't recognize the entire seven hundred and seventy-five thousand that the school committee has in the budget that they have before them today, then you would just adjust that number down from the seven hundred and seventy-five to a number of seven seventy-five less the three hundred and eighty-three thousand. Again, they're still using a portion of the four twenty. They're using, you know, thirty-seven thousand and change of that money just to balance their program. But, you know, at this point, it would be a balanced budget. It's just that the revenue adjustment, if it, if all went through June, as we've got forecast tonight, they would just make the adjustment on that revenue statement. And it would, it would be a balanced budget.
So when we have the number of their, when we have the undesignated fund at one million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, we add into that the three hundred and eighty-three? Is that what you're doing for next year? So it'll be higher than that?
Yes, it, well, it would be higher than that. No, it would be the same amount.
If we get the money that the governor is proposing?
It would be the same amount, because you add in the surplus. If there was a zero surplus, you're not adding anything in, if you didn't appropriate the dollars in the first place. So you get to the same exact dollar point. All I'm saying is that if the suggestion is being made that we're appropriating three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars more than we need, I'm saying that's not what the final budget would be from the school committee.
Okay. Yeah. Scott?
I didn't want Steve's final comment to not get underscored. We've heard both from Steve and from a number of the people who have risen to speak tonight, concern about the quality of programs in the school. In effect, that isn't an incidental concern. It is the core concern. And the community of South Kingstown has been very clear in its history of statements on schools that there is an expectation that the schools of South Kingstown will achieve excellence. If you look at the list of potential cuts to the budget that the school committee has worked with, one of the speakers who rose earlier noted that almost exclusively, those are about things that will hurt children. We are, I, it is my belief that the school committee made judicious cuts this year. They are deep cuts, but there was a conscious effort to cut away from children. The list of what comes next is all about children. And so I think that as we look ahead, because Steve and Alan have accurately described what the financial landscape looks like, the conversation for next year will be somewhat different, I suspect, than this year. You cannot run the South Kingstown School Department without an all-day kindergarten program and say, we're offering the same program. You cannot cut away a music program that has been recognized for its excellence across the state and say, but it's still the same program. You cannot cut away the intramural program that involves in round numbers more than fifty percent of our children and say, well, that's, we're still running the same program. We have, for years, cut in order to make this budget work. The town council has continually supported the money needed to run a quality school. The challenges are only getting worse. And so the question, I think, that needs to be asked of all of us is, are we prepared to draw a line in the sand protecting the quality of the education that children experience in South Kingstown? Three years ago, four years ago, we were very concerned about the number of children who were going to charters, whose families were opting not to become, put their students in the South Kingstown school system. Frankly, we have turned that corner. We have more children coming into our schools, or fewer children going out into charters than we had four years ago. But cuts in program lead to family-based decisions. And the earlier comment about every child who goes to a charter, that's ten thousand dollars plus. That, those dollars are critical to the quality of the education that we're receiving. I don't think it's reasonable to expect the legislators in the General Assembly to fix this. If they could have, they would have. The revenue isn't there either. We are coming to a point, frankly, the, by the way we have budgeted, all three of our unions have been asked to contribute to the pain. And the taxpayers are being asked in small measure this year to contribute to the pain. I am painfully aware that next year, the pain level goes up. And that's really what Steve has said. This isn't, let's just get through one year, or let's just get through two years. We aren't even just trying to maintain the status quo. We are swimming against an ugly tide. And the long-range planning that the school department is involved in now is an effort to provide structural changes that can accommodate some of the needed rebalancing in our budget. This is not a problem of the urbs. And frankly, the urban school districts need additional revenue in order to educate their children. And so in this balancing act, we will have lots of opportunities to chat again. And we will have lots of difficult conversations at the school committee table. I want to be clear that my view is that the conversations over the next six months will be much more difficult. When you start talking about cutting music, when you start talking about cutting sports and intramurals, those are not red flags waved to see whether we can't get people in town to be upset. Those are the things that we consider, because we have already cut for years the things that came first. And this is where we are now. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, meaning is adjourned. Thank you to all.